And then I have to do the Facebook.
Are we live?
We are live, yes.
Great. Welcome to the October 26th, 2005 special meeting of the Social Service Human Relations Board. It is a Wednesday night. This meeting is being recorded. The chat function has been turned off. If members of the public would like to comment on an item, please digitally raise your hand or email Gracia Manahayon, G M A N N A H A Y O N at AlamedaCA dot co. Comments submitted during the meeting before the conclusion of the public comment section will be read into the record. Her email address is also on the meeting's agenda. If you're calling me by phone, please email this Ben Ahayon and we, as we cannot see you, raise your hand. You can also dial star nine to raise your hand and we will call in. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. The public has two opportunities for public comment. First, under Agenda Item Two, Public Comments. Comments from the audience may concern matters not on the agenda but must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the Social Service Human Relations Board. Second, under each Agenda Item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on that specific item. Each item follows a format similar to city council meetings. First, after presentation, we will ask if there are any clarifying questions from Shrub members or staff. Second, we will ask if there are any public comments on this Agenda Item. And finally, after public comment, we will open the item up to more discussion and a vote if recommended. This meeting is called to order at seven oh three P M. And we will do, we'll do all roll call votes together. So roll call. Bernie Wolf.
Here.
Diane Evercher Ohmi.
You're muted, Diane.
Here.
Gerald Bryant.
Here.
Michelle Buckholz.
Here.
Samantha Green.
Here.
And Scott Means.
Here.
Board member Ohmi is joining virtually. Please briefly state your reason for attending virtually, Diane.
Fatigue. It's like too many nights in a row to be at City Hall, so I asked for, to be excused tonight.
Okay, thank you. And then we also are joining us from Housing Human Services, Simone Falls, Division Manager, Gracia, Gracia Manahayon, Program Manager, and on screen, Andre Fairley, Management Analyst. We'll move right along to Item Two, Non-Agenda Public Comments. The city welcomes speakers providing public comment, but please be advised this is a limited public forum. Comments from the audience may concern matters either on or not on the agenda but must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the Social Service and Human Relations Board. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Comments concerning matters on this evening's agenda will be heard when that item is called. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned, and if they continue to disregard the rules, their opportunity to speak will end. If speakers disregard the rules, oh, sorry. Are there any speakers?
There is no public comment and no hands raised in the Zoom to indicate a public comment.
Okay. Well, then we can move to Item Number Three Minutes. Three A is Review and Approval Minutes for September 25th, 2025.
I have motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. We will do roll call. As I said, Bernie Wolf.
Yes.
Diane Evercher Ohmi.
Yes.
Gerald Bryant.
Yes.
Michelle Buckholz.
Uh, yes.
Samantha Green.
Yes.
Scott Means, yes. It's unanimous. Six, six zero. Okay. Moving right along to Item Number Four. Four A is Review Volunteer of the Year Award Winner Recommendations. The Road Home Committee will be awarded the Volunteer of the Year Honor to Alameda residents that have served and uplifted their community through extensive, meaningful volunteer work. The Road Home created and disseminated a survey throughout the community to accept nominations for this award when closed on October 10th, 2025. The Road Home has selected potential finalists for the award, which we will brought before the Shrub today for discussion. The board will vote to, oh, the board will vote to accept these nominations on December 4th, 2025. Shrub meeting. If approved, these individuals will be honored and recognized by the Shrub. Sorry, I stumbled a little bit there, but I didn't, wasn't, I hadn't read that part. I didn't know we made that decision yet, so that's great.
If I may just add, I, we sent this before the discussion about whether you want to vote or not, so you can still decide not to vote if you'd like to.
Oh, okay, I thought it was reset afterwards. Okay, we can talk about that later when we sit up, okay? Because if we, if we don't, we said of not voting, then we don't need to wait until December 4th. So let's, go ahead and write to the presentation for award nominees by Gracia and the Road Home Committee.
Great, so I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen with the list of names that the committee has, is recommending for award. So we have folks submit recommendations, nominations, and they completed four or five questions describing how these folks go above and beyond in their volunteer efforts. We, there was so many good ones that the committee could not just pick one adult and one youth to recognize and celebrate. So there are three for each category. As mentioned in the staff report, there were different criteria that they reviewed, and that was the community impact, their commitment and dedication, their leadership and inspiration, and then there were bonus points if this nominee aligned with the Social Service Human Relations Board's purpose and goals. So for the adult category, we have Sister Pat Nagle for the Lifetime Achievement Award, and I apologize if I mispronounced names. We have Kate Kasperger for the Social Services Award, Armando Braca for Human Relations Award. For the youth category, we have Soliana Tess Faliette for the Youth Leadership Award, Sienna Miller for the Youth Services Award, and Tate, which we have a missing last name, but we have their contact information and will be reaching out for the Youth Human Relations Award. So I did wanna pass it to the committee to give any comments or other things they wanna add.
Well, Sister Pat, she's a wonderful person and she's represented in the community for as long as I've been here, so makes sense.
Yeah, there are a number of people that nominated her as well, with a lot of, kind of, a few sentences language of how amazing she is and the amount of service that's been, like, over the.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, she's, she's really amazing and, yeah, it makes sense.
And I just wanna note that a lot of these, all these nominees do really fit into our, and we really wanted to, kind of, like, divide it into, like, the Social Services and Human Relations, so talking about, like, connections, so like, our, our, Miss Grasa, who does, like, a lot of work for Matchstick and a lot of organizational skills and connection in our, in our elder community, and so we were, like, trying to divide it based on that, like, people that are connecting and bringing our community together and those who are serving, kind of, our overall mission.
Can't recall which one of them, one of the two youth that starts with the letter S, was one ones that did work for Dignity Village.
Soliana is on the Youth Advisory Committee.
Okay.
So it must have been Soliana. And then Sami Miller.
That was, yeah, that's a good question.
And then Sami Miller was for A R P D, so she was working with the young people teaching them to swim, but not as a paid physician, but as a volunteer, but in reception services. So there was a lot of, like, connecting people, teaching people, leading the way.
And she's a middle schooler.
No, Tate is a middle schooler.
Tate is a middle schooler.
Sienna's a swimmer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and working through A R P D through the swim program, so.
I think it's gonna be nice. Is Soliana gonna be with us tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah, she'll be at the show by us as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of time.
It'd be great to be here, to be here for some, yeah, that's great.
And just for the, oh, sorry, Bernie. Our plan was to have the December meeting award them, have their, invite their nominator to give them the certificate. I have, like, cupcakes and we'll do it, try to get the City Hall or the, not.
Chambers is booked, I checked today, but I think we can still find a bigger room, so I'm gonna find a bigger room.
But, and do, like, a presentation and just, it will be a certificate, we don't have anything, like, it will be a nice piece of paper, but.
I love my handprint.
And then the handprint.
It'll be framed at the very least.
Oh, cool.
My favorite word, attaboy, there you go. Everybody should get a couple. All right, well, good choice.
Oh, and Kate Kasperger is also a pediatrician at La Clinica and does this, she does a lot of the shower.
Set up the facilities.
Yeah, like.
At Christ Episcopal Church, they have a shower program for the unhoused, and she has, they described campus hours for volunteering.
She's the shower head, which I thought was the cutest.
There are some really sweet things that people wrote in, and you could tell that people, like, really enjoyed writing, you know, about all of these.
And I, I think as we do this, like, we should, I think this is, like, I'm excited about doing this, so just to continue. It does feel like we're, like, getting our mission.
Little beer, last meeting of the year, so that'll be nice.
That's terrific. I think it's a great list and looking forward to meeting them and learning more about their work. Just wondering if there's gonna be any communications to highlight them.
Me, social media?
To notify them or to?
Or no, no, I mean to the general public.
Yeah, social media, kind of stuff, maybe.
I don't know, any, any sort of, you know, like, if we could feature them somehow and either through social media or whatever venues, but I, I think they're, you know, who they are and what they've done for Alameda should be, you know, publicly acknowledged or known.
Yeah, and then one mentioned the library, yeah, and then we're also talking about in the new year, so the library has, like, a photo gallery that they would have, like, if folks are willing to have their pictures and, like, their little bio up there that we would have them participate in as well.
Or even in City Hall.
They have lovely paintings there, though, yeah.
I was, like, we were, kind of, disappointed that we don't get to see, like, all of them, right? Because it's such a cool list of people that are all doing such amazing work. Very hard to choose, but yeah.
So we can get the posts to do something, I feel like the post would, like.
Maybe the city could do a little post on social media.
Yeah, I can, I'll talk to our communications director.
Yeah, or why don't they do the little, like, the little bio of each of them that they do on, like, Instagram, how they do,
the slides.
Like, the little people around the city or whatever, it could be our volunteer war heroes, those folks.
Oh, we could, we could ask the, like, you know, the, yeah, the we are Alameda, like, the.
That one. That.
That part.
That's interesting.
Okay.
Do we have any comments from the public now? Or?
No. There are no hands raised to indicate public comment, and I have not received any other form of public comment.
We can come back to the board, we still have a little discussion to have, and whether, what do people think about the need to have a vote?
We can vote it, it should be easy.
Yeah.
Just have comments for process purposes, I think it, it should have a vote, especially if they're, if you're gonna continue to do this on an annual basis, you'll get more and more, hopefully, applicants, and there may need to be more discussion around who each of you prefer to vote in. And also, I think it just helps to solidify that it all confirms you.
Yeah, sure. Our, our biggest issue, we were just considering, was the fact that we're trying to do the ceremony on the fourth, I guess, getting a consensus here at least, if we do do a vote, at least knowing that everyone's going to say yes, so that it's not an embarrassing situation.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't have to give that, yeah, okay. Because I think what she's saying is true. If we have it formally voted on and still do it on the fourth, then that's.
We can't vote now.
Because it wasn't on the agenda, isn't it, July?
So the only time it would be a problem is if we got all ready to do the ceremony and then, like, three of us people turned rogue and said, no, we don't wanna give it to these people. So I don't think that's gonna happen, and then, then we have to, we'll probably hold back on the ceremony. But I don't really think it's gonna happen.
We could vote on the fourth.
Yeah.
Fourth would probably be fun, because then they can at least see it in action. There you go.
Yeah, maybe the, the action item would be, we, the vote would be to formally recognize. Maybe that's the thing, like, we could use a language to say, like, we formally recognize this on an annual basis, or these are the first inaugural, annual.
I think it would be to approve.
Yeah.
I can't make it all fancy.
You just, you can use fancy words, you can say, I would like to proclaim that we're gonna prove this item.
Gotcha.
Because it's not really popular, they just.
You are, you are correct.
Okay, so I think that's ground voting, so I think that's good, we're good with that, all right. Okay, now we're moving on to four B. This four B is a recommendation to direct the preparation of a needs statement to confirm ongoing community needs for the fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. To designate the president of the Social Service Human Relations Board and our board members to review the statement and represent the board at the December 2nd, 2025 City Council Public Hearing to determine that C D V G public service funds will be prorated for fiscal year 2026, 27 based on available funds. And we have a presentation by Andre Fairley, H H S Management Analyst.
I will share screen shortly.
Did you say Andre H H S?
How is the human service? All right, Andre, you can take it away.
All right, so good evening, everyone. Nice to see so many familiar faces. I am Andre Fairley, as you guys all know, a management analyst with the Housing and Human Services Division, and I will be presenting on the Community Development Block Grant Community Needs for Fiscal Year 26, 27 Action Plan. With me tonight is Simone Falls, who is the Housing and Human Services Manager, and Gracia Manahayon, who is the Housing and Human Services Program Manager. Tonight, we will be discussing the housing and community needs for the upcoming fiscal year, and I am happy to answer questions at the end of the presentation. Next slide. All right, so tonight's goal is I will go over the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan process so that Shrub may review and confirm the community needs and direct the preparation of a community needs statement to confirm the community needs for the upcoming fiscal year. In addition, we will be discussing staff's recommendations to fund public service providers for a second straight year. Please note that this will be dependent on 2026 allocations from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. Next slide. All right. What is Community Development Block Grant? So this is federal funds provided by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. C D V G funds are intended to assist low and moderate income persons by developing viable urban communities which provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, or advancement of economic opportunity. Next slide. HUD Required Documents. In August 2025, the city submitted a new five-year strategic plan which outlined the housing and community development priority needs that will inform C D V G funding decisions through 2030. To continue receiving C D V G funding, the city must submit an annual action plan to HUD which details the programs, activities, and resources that will address the housing and community development needs that were identified in the five-year strategic plan. Non-housing community development social services continue to be a priority. For the last several years, the Social Service Human Relations Board has provided a refined priority statement that identifies the current and anticipated social service needs in the community. Next slide. Non-housing public service priorities identified by Shrub. In 2024, Shrub identified the following priorities for C D V G funded services. The first priority need being mental health services, and underlined is promotion of healthy relationships, implementation of crisis intervention, and domestic violence awareness. The second priority need was food security and nutrition programs, which details emphasis on serving unhoused, low-income seniors and persons with disabilities and accessibility to healthier food options. The third need was access to housing and emergency shelter, and this entails increasing housing affordability and supply. The fourth priority need was advocacy and coordination, which entails wraparound services to support marginalized and underserved communities. The fifth priority need was age-friendly communities, which details inclusion model of engagement integrated with disability and equity initiatives and a livable Alameda for people of all ages. And the last priority need was social connectedness, which entails community building, diversity, and inclusivity. Next slide. All right, Stakeholder Outreach and Community Needs Assessment. So last year, city staff contacted thirty-nine local service providers and religious institutions to ask questions about the community need. A total of fifteen organizations responded, indicating that the need for safety net services for low-income individuals and families still exists and should continue to be addressed. Many of the needs that Shrub identified in 2024 are consistent with each organization's goals and objectives. This year, the city did not survey local organizations and providers because staff is in the process of preparing for the next community needs assessment in 2026. The new C N A, or Community Needs Assessment, will be in alignment with the Road Home Strategic Plan, which is central to the city's goals and initiatives to promote social services, make affordable housing more accessible, and ultimately end homelessness. Next slide. All right. Funding Availability. So funding for the next fiscal year is derived from two sources. That is, one, entitlement funds that are allocated by HUD, and two, program income that is generated from C D V G loan repayments. Public service funding is capped at fifteen percent of the fiscal year entitlement allocation plus the program income received in the previous fiscal year. Program income will continue to be received through June 30th. Since program income continues to be received through June 30th, staff estimates that how much program income is expected to be received before the end of the fiscal year and the annual action plan will include this estimate. Consequently, all assumptions about program income are based solely on estimates. Those estimates are always revised prior to the submission of the C D V G Annual Action Plan, which will take place in May of 2026. Next slide. All right, Fiscal Year 2026, 27 C D V G Funding. Given that the federal government has not adopted a federal budget for next fiscal year, HUD may not announce C D V G allocations until late winter, early spring. Because the types of community needs remain unchanged, we are proposing to fund current public service providers for an additional year. When HUD announces awards, each provider will be funded on a prorata basis. For fiscal year 25, 26, the city was awarded a C D V G allocation of $1,096,000 in thirty, Based on the interest and loan payouts received this fiscal year, the city could receive up to $60,000 of program income by June 30th, 2026. And as you can see in that middle line, that's the program income that's estimated to be received, and fifteen percent will be $9,000. HUD allows only fifteen percent of entitlement, that top line item, $150,000 plus previous year's program income, to be awarded to public services. Complying with HUD requirements will result in a maximum of approximately $159,000 available for public service providers, and this is just an estimate and a projection. Unfortunately, C D V G allocations continue to decrease year after year. With that being said, staff will continue to encourage service providers to fundraise and diversify funding sources. Next slide. All right. Fiscal Year 25, 26 Funding allocations. Here we have shown the C D V G funded service providers as approved by Shrub last October in 2024. Staff is asking Shrub to agree to prorate next year's allocations based on the actual award by HUD and program income that is available in 2026. For example, if the available funds increases by five percent, fill with the number shown above. Conversely, a five percent decrease in available funds would be passed through as well. All right, next slide. Action Plan Schedule. Here are highlights related to the community needs public hearing and the subsequent notice of funding availability and request for proposals. The key dates for Shrub are tonight and again on November 3rd, when the needs letter will be finalized, and the December 2nd City Council Public Hearing, where the Shrub President will present. This year, Shrub members will not need to review the public service applications since the community priority needs remain the same, and we will fund the second year of the agreement with the existing service providers, that is, if Shrub approves tonight. On January 15th, 2026, staff will post a notice of funding availability and requests for proposals will solicit public improvement and affordable housing proposals only. Then we anticipate that HUD will announce C D V G funding awards in late winter, early spring. Depending on when HUD announces the allocations for next year, staff will take either a proposed methodology or actual funding amounts to counsel at the first meeting in May for approval. Tonight, we will kick off the first step in the schedule by reviewing and confirming the priority needs that Shrub will communicate to City Council for consideration in the upcoming fiscal year. Next slide. All right, Fiscal Year 26, 27 Needs Process. In conclusion, there are three steps to complete the needs process. Tonight, step one, Shrub hears this presentation, review and confirm priority needs, and direct the preparation of a needs statement. Then, step two, Shrub President means and board members prepare the community needs statement. Lastly, step three, the City Council will hold a public hearing to receive public comment and adopt a needs statement for the upcoming fiscal year. The funding allocation process will be a separate step, which will go to council eventually in May of 2026. Next slide. All right, and that concludes my presentation. I will open it up for questions and, I believe, public comments.
Yeah, thank you. Do you have questions? Oh, board, oh, board, yes, the board, sorry, the board, look that up.
Do we know, based upon that current situation with the federal government, what the anticipated timeframe will really be? I mean, right now, we don't know when it's gonna end, so are they really looking at next year before we'll be able to get the information? Or is it something that they're gonna just try and press forward with extra fast? I guess that's the easiest way to say it. Are they gonna rush through it and try and get it done as soon as it is, or are they gonna make them wait?
I think that's an excellent question, Gerald. We are all in the unknown at the moment. I think it's, it's good to say that because we're dealing with uncertain times, and I, I'll speak to it a little bit more when we do our updates from the Housing and Human Services, Housing and Human Services Division, but we're, we're not sure. We are working on a contingency plan if we were not to receive. Uh, we're, we're not sure. We are working on a contingency plan if we were not to receive um. Funding for these, you know, these next few months, uh, while the government is shut down. Um, but, you know, we, we still, we're, we're working. With everything as we go, we're trying to figure it out kinda as we go and um, I think the city of Alameda is fortunate to uh, to be able to plan. For um, the worst case scenario and have a contingency plan. Um, and of course Simone and Amy are working on the back, in the backend to Grecia as well. Um, and all of us to, to make sure that our service providers and all of our CDBG sub recipients are, are taken care of.
Will there be any consideration of diverting funds from other parts of? The city's uh, budget to be able to pick up for some of the shortfalls in, in overall amounts?
I, I would say that's definitely a possibility. Um, we, we have been discussing um. Using general fund dollars to um. To fill the, the void if, if that were the worst case. Um, I'll let Simone speak to that a little bit more, but that, that is our, that's part of our contingency plan, yes.
And then I had a question that I hear pass on about, um. So it's more about the, the, with the progress reports that you provided us with, was just knowing if any of the programming. There's gonna be any changes to allocations, just do we know, because a lot of the programs are using. Multiple funding sources to fund these programs. Do we know if anyone's like not gonna be able to provide those services because they're not getting matching funds and so they're cutting those programs? Or are there any services that we're currently funding that are duplicated through other services that we are providing? Did you catch that?
Yeah, that's, um, that's a good question as well. Um, I would say that we. We're, we're working with our providers um, during these, these difficult times. All of the providers we've reached out to thus far to get um, their estimates. For this current fiscal year that we're in, um, have said that they would be able to sustain their services. Until January of twenty twenty six, so that's, that's good news. However, I don't think um, it's sustainable and um, as mentioned, um. With the previous question, we are trying to come up with a contingency plan in, in case. Um, we, we don't receive our CDB, CDBG funds, but. I would like to preface that by saying that we've already been approved for twenty five, twenty six funding. And our HUD funding approval agreement has been partially executed, meaning that the city has. Already done our part to get it signed and everything. Um, we're just waiting to hear back from HUD, which. Is ultimately impacted by the shutdown at the moment, so. You know, we're, we're in a little bit of, of limbo, but we do have a contingency plan and in case um. We don't receive the CDBG funding.
Um, can you talk more to the affordable housing? Since we're talking about the affordable housing piece of it, I think that's kind of that, that whole linkage between. The improvements and things that were discussed, can you talk a little bit to that?
Yeah, um, as in. Yeah, how will, how will development be impacted or what?
Yeah, yeah, how will it be impacted? Again, we know that there are a lot of services that are needed here in Alameda. And that was one of the more specific ones and. Homelessness is a problem that we don't wanna see get worse because. There's no service providers getting the money they need, so how, I guess. Do we have anything in the way of goals set up for the public, uh, for the funds? Public improvements or whatever improvements they were hoping to do. I know there were needs over at certain places for.
Do you think like residential rehabilitation or the actual building of the.
Residential rehabilitation staffing, um, a lot of these questions are about the places that we already have. And so, I'm just kinda wondering, how will this affect things like staffing at places like Dignity Village? How will it affect things like staffing at the various? Villages love, places that are specifically working with minimal money. I mean, I don't know that they're not gonna be included in the CDBG grant, but the funding still comes out somewhere, right?
So for um, for our shelter programs, they will be minimally impacted because they're primarily funded through general fund. And state funds and state funds pardon do not come from the federal government. For affordable housing for the, for federal funds, that I think that's more of an impact that. Um, you know, housing authority will feel as far as their vouchers and changes to the voucher process. They've already felt that impact with the loss of the emergency housing voucher. So there could be an impact to affordable housing in that way. We don't typically directly fund, HHS doesn't typ- typically directly fund affordable housing. The residential rehab program could be impacted if we lose CPG right now. There's the understanding that um, the proposal is to decrease home and CPG funding. And increase other funding. So potentially our allocation could be decreased, but there's other federal funds that may be increased. Like ESG and COC funding. So it's just a matter of whenever the government opens up again, let's vote it on and decide it right now. We are expecting to still get our twenty twenty five allocation as Andre stated. We got our um, agreement, we signed it, we returned it, then the government shut down. And so they're not able to sign anything until it opens back up. And we would expect if they would sign it, um, as soon as it opens, so. We're optimistic at this time that we'll still receive those funds, but for twenty twenty six years, just I don't know.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that linkage out of the way there.
And then I also just wanted to speak to the contingency funding that Andre talked about. The contingency funding or contingency plan is intended to just be a temporary gap fill. Where we would use general funds to pay our providers now and then pay ourselves back once we get the CPG funds. That is fully the intention of that plan. It is possible that HUD comes back and doesn't sign the agreement. Uh, in which case, we wouldn't be able to pay ourselves back for the contingency fund. But we haven't decided how much we would fund. Right now, we're really looking towards. The social services grants, which you all knows the smaller amount versus the. Uh, development grants, which are much larger. We're looking at that's equaling core in our. Social services grants as the first priorities because those are actively in process where the other programs have not started yet.
Doesn't Alameda have a reserve of money that they've kind of kept out to make sure that they were ahead? Alameda County?
The city has a reserve of funds. I would say that it could sound like a lot, but when you're talking about government, it really isn't a lot, so they have to be. Um, conservative around how they decide to spend that.
So if they use the money that from the general fund to pay for the housing element portion. Would they be taking out that reserve to be able to do it? To be able to repay back to the general fund, because I would assume they're not gonna not pay themselves back to the general fund, that's.
Yeah, my understanding is that's where it would come from, but I would not prove that on the record. I would have to confirm with the budget office. And yes, as long as you get the CDBG funds, we would pay ourselves back.
Okay, just wanted to make sure because that kind of connection i- is important. If we're talking about not getting funds for housing in long periods of time, if it goes off in four or five months. That could be a problem going into fiscal year twenty twenty six.
I mean, the current politics, I wonder if HUD is considered a democratic agency.
Well, they can do what they want to at the federal level, but these problems are local, so we will still have to figure it out one way or another, so I'm just asking questions.
Measure W. Um, but um, I've been meeting with senior advocates about it and this, the county is signaling some, some things that are troubling. They released some of, um, measure W to go into homelessness, but they've taken most of it and they wanna hold it until they actually get a budget. Which you don't wanna hear because that means they may be considering using it to backfill budget shortfalls. Otherwise, they would release the money now, they would act away for the budget, right, on follow. So this is voter approved money, this has been a norm actually. Oakland has done this too with funds, so um, that I don't, you know, it's going to be important. We don't really have much of a voice or say on the federal level, but from local, locals' perspective. We can go to more to supero as a means and be involved in advocacy, and I'm making sure these monies go to the right place.
So I think it's important, especially given what we're talking about now. And I know, I know how the system is working right now and to take away money would make it a lot worse. It's already struggling.
Yeah, we, we need all of that measure W money in the system, okay?
Why just, I mean, I think that the TLDR is that we just don't know, right, at the bottom line.
I never, I never like to think that just because I don't know, I can't make plans about something. So if we know that there's local funds, I would prefer that we at least think towards what could be done as opposed to waiting for. The other shoe to drop, because inevitably the other shoe is gonna drop and no matter what it is, it's not gonna be what we expected. So if we should maybe start engaging. County about that, especially, I would think that would be in our purview, right?
One of the, one of the members of the board of supervisors is, you know, represents this area, right? Because it's leading down, right?
I would think that that would be something we might wanna reach out to Nina about and have that conversation. At least because we don't want this to become something that just disappears, because that's how this goes.
Yes, because especially because I was just thinking when you were talking about how, what happens with senior programs during these time periods. They don't, they don't get cut, but what happens, like I saw, I saw Spectrum was out there, SOS. What ends up happening is like, for example, Spectrum may have to cut back to doing four meals. I mean, one less meal a week, I see you that, right? SOS's home delivered meals, they're really good about not having a waiting list, even though they have a waiting list because they get extra funding. If that funding goes up, now they have a waiting list, so again, more people on me. But so these programs don't go away completely, but they whittle away, they become less and less effective.
And again, people suffer. And if we're here to be the social services and human relations board, we're supposed to be reporting back to city council about the things that are going on and. How we can best benefit, then I would think, yeah, let's just make that introduction. I know Lena's a good person and she would be happy to have the conversation with us. I don't think she would have a problem with having a conversation, so just a thought.
Andre, is the city gonna make um, more efforts with these groups to raise funds themselves?
Um, we actually don't help or assist with fundraising uh, for the organizations. That's something that we, we encourage them to do um, as far as leveraging funding. I would say, um, there are certain organizations that have asked for more money. Um, in the past, I'm sure you guys remember, uh. One of the organizations, I don't wanna say the, the exact name of the organization, but one of them asked for. Two to three times the amount of funding or requested two to three, the times amount of funding that um, we could actually give them. Um, and we had to um, figure out how we can give them a different. Funding source or figure out a way to fund them in a different way, so that way they can fill the, the gap for their services. Um, but yeah, we, we as a city, we don't actually uh, help fundraise or um, seek other funding sources. Avenues of funding for, for those organizations. We just encourage them to um, to um, plan for that.
Well, let's see if there's a, we didn't ask for public comment yet, right? Let's just see if there's any, but um, I know we can keep talking about this.
Okay, we have a public comment from a Carol Maha. Go ahead, Carol.
Good evening, board members. My name's Carol Mahar and I'm at Spectrum Community Services, one of your CDBG uh, recipients. We provide senior meals and fall prevention exercise classes at Mastic Senior Center, serving older adults in our community every week. Thank you so much for tonight's presentation on the fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven funding and for the mention about measure W. I've attended many of those board of supervisors meetings on that measure and I deeply appreciate your acknowledgement of its importance. Any help that your board can provide in encouraging the supervisors to allocate those funds quickly to existing programs with proven results. Would make a tremendous difference in our community. I know that we're all navigating the same uncertainty right now as we await HUD's final approval. While the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six CDBG funding has been approved, it's not been executed. And that delays creating real challenges for organizations like ours. Spectrum continues to serve Alameda seniors and will keep doing so, but this situation isn't sustainable. We're anticipating greater needs as programs like CalFresh and others face cuts or major changes that will affect local residents. At the same time, we're seeing reductions across nearly all funding streams, both government and private, making it even harder to fill the gap. And trust me, I explore every possible funding source and opportunity that there is out there. But without stable and predictable public funding, there's only so far we can stretch private donations to keep services running at the level that our seniors need. We truly appreciate the city's partnership and all of your efforts to move this process forward. If there's any way to help bridge the gap, even temporarily through creative interim funding solutions. Uh, the general fund, what, some of the other solutions and, and the contingency plan. It would mean so much to community-based organizations like ours. Who are working hard to keep these essential services in place for Alameda residents. So thank you for your leadership, for your advocacy and for your continued collaboration with those of us out on the front lines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there is no other public comment.
So I'm gonna take a little, she was saying something I've been actually thinking a little bit too. I think one thing needs to happen locally is that there, there are a lot of smaller organizations. Um, I mean, well, smaller than government because it's, you know, foundations, Kaiser Foundation, East Bay Foundation, Aging. These big community foundations, all these other foundations, they all have funding and they're all just giving out money without really coordinating with each other. I think there actually needs to be better grant coordination, so it has a greater impact. Because who knows how many other people give Spectrum some money? And what is the expectation of that money? I'm not saying they aren't doing a great job, I think they are, but it's, there's still kind of lack, we don't really have a landscape of that. From a funder's standpoint, how can we do it? Well, one thing would be to en- encourage funders to get to, on, to the table together and actually plan. Outside of just their individual boards. You know, get board presidents of all these different boards to get together and say, what is our strategy? What, what has been lost that we need to actually, you know, maintain?
What would that look like for us as doing? I mean, I'm just trying to flesh this out. It seems like a reasonable prospect.
Oh, yeah, um, you know, I know that they have, I know it's like more formal things like that, like they have uh, mayors, mayor, mayor, that sort of thing. So I, I don't know, um.
What?
I'm not sure. Diane has heard me talk about this, Diane, Diane has heard me talk about this before, that I think there needs to be better coordination among grant funders.
You know, I mean, when I first started, I had in philanthropy over thirty years ago, I mean, I had the same inclination that there needed to be. Better coordination and I think um, efforts have been made in the past, like we actually had a East Bay Funders Collaborative. Where all the foundations that were supporting Oakland um, as a, as a place-based uh, strategy. We would convene and meet regularly and talk about uh, what we were learning from the field and then also try to direct. You know, our grants to uh, you know, uh, tar- targeted strategies or targeted uh, entities. But it, it kinda just fell apart because every foundation, each foundation had a different grant-making cycle. And also, you know, uh, grant-making priorities and then they were accountable to their boards. Uh, and the boards were not necessarily um, as interested in collaboration. Um, so, so you know, they, they kind of wanted to kind of ma- maintain their independence as, you know, as a foundation. So that was our experience with East Bay Funders and then we also try to organize a homeless task. So that was our experience with East Bay Funders, and then we also tried to organize a homeless task force, which has waxed and waned, where people would, would throw in their money, each foundation would throw in, you know, a s- a sum of money into a pot, and then the, the collaborative will then decide, you know, uh, you know, what they would fund or who they would fund. So there would be at least, you know, some strategic direction as to where the resources were going. And, um, and that also failed, because, you know, the homeless issue was beyond what philanthropy could muster. So I'm just saying, great idea, but it's, uh, it's been tried before, it's not succeeded. But that's not to say that, you know, you shouldn't try again.
Yes, so I appreciate your comments, and sometimes, you know, it takes, you know, generational change. I remember when I was trying to make changes with the senior centers in Oakland, and it really couldn't manifest itself until the older boomer staff left, and I brought in millennials, and suddenly, everything I wanted to do became reality. I'm not saying that's like a magic trick for everything, but sometimes that does happen. And maybe enough time has passed, where it's a different generation of people who are willing to think that way.
I think that a good thing to keep in mind is, you know, philanthropy has its limits. And, um, not, not only in terms of how they are structured and how they operate and how they make their decisions, but also in terms of their resources. So, you know, if you're talking about deep rooted change, it's, philanthropy is, you know, just one piece of it.
Yeah, I know, I get what you're saying, it's just, it seems like the paradigms have changed so much, because what we were doing in the past, if you look at the record of like, the East Bay Foundation Aging, there were, you know, smaller grants that were helping bolster up existing services and programs. But now the basic program behind it has fallen apart, and so that would, won't do that work anymore, so. Yeah, I think it's more conversation on this, definitely.
I have a quick question about the process, so is there anything that we need to do tonight to prepare for the letter?
You're taking a vote?
Okay. Upon the existing needs as stated, and the existing.
It's a, it's a big question. To continue the existing needs letter. Or what are we voting on?
I don't mind putting forward a motion to direct a preparation, I'm saying this all off the top of my head too, because I'm writing. Uh, to direct the preparation of a need statement to confirm the ongoing needs for the fiscal year two thousand twenty six, twenty seven CDBG action plan, and present to city council on December second, two thousand twenty five.
Based on the previous year's speech letter?
Based on your previous letter, that's my motion. Do you want to second that?
I second.
Can we have a second? All right, um, Bernie Wolf?
Yes.
Diane, name is Jeremy?
Yes.
Cheryl Bryant?
Yes.
Michelle Buckholz?
Yes.
Samantha Green?
Yes.
Scott means yes. It's unanimous. All right. We're going to move on now to a non-voting item.
Thank you, Andre.
Yeah, thank you so much, I appreciate it, that was a great presentation.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I don't want to cut the conversation.
No, that's, yeah.
Good, good, I'm trying to segue.
The, um, uh, this is for, for C work, uh, work, of course, this slide is for board discussion only, there's no staff presentation, so we'll go directly to public comments. Are there any public comments on this agenda?
There is no public comment.
Great, um, all right, do you want to just, we do, in order, I guess, so I do, uh, the road home. Uh, people experiencing homelessness first, we just heard a report, um.
Do we have a date for the point in time count? January twenty second. We anticipate, um, bright and early, um. So you don't have a new drawing, but does everyone know the point in time count?
Uh, yes.
I think you'd have a better description than I would.
Oh, yeah, okay, I, I mean, you could do, yeah, that single point in time count of individuals that are experiencing sheltered and unsheltered homelessness in the city of Alameda, it gets combined to go together with county data that's been submitted to HUD. It's a requirement of a federal funding allocation.
And we see, and we see part of it, volunteers that will go out into the community and take a survey, and, um, get demographic and observed data.
It's a visual count as well as a follow-up survey of demographic information, as well as experience of services and needs.
And you said it was the twenty second?
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
It's the first.
It's the Thursday, okay. Did, did we have plenty of people last time?
I, I was there.
Or was there sho- was there shortage at all?
My understanding is that ninety-something folks signed up and around eighty-something showed up. Which is a good amount, our goal is to recruit a hundred volunteers this year. And we, well, we have our reporters.
It's fun.
I didn't go as much into detail, so.
It's gonna be on the same day as the Social Services and Human Relations Board.
Oh, yes, we did discuss.
Um, so you all are gonna vote on a calendar of meetings in the December meeting, and that one will not be on the same day. So I'm gonna propose a different day for that one, to spare a lot of time. So you don't have to buy a four AM to eight PM day. Yeah.
Thank you, just.
And Simone, is the wish, we have a wish list as well, right?
That's what I was having, no, I shouldn't wait until we do our reporting. So we have a wish list, we are trying to put together kits for folks to take outside and pass out to people when we do the calendar survey. And so we have an Amazon wishlist, uh, I don't know if it's on the website. If, so we'll have it added to our website, and we can share that out. Uh, and so you can just click the QR code or click the link and put in an order, and it'll come to the office, and it'll put the kits together.
Will you need volunteers to put the kits together?
There are people who are willing to come, I put kits together, and it takes a long time, so we would love volunteers.
I have nothing much to drive the kids to.
I got girl stacks.
Oh, girl stacks.
Uh, oh, and, um, just a reminder, it's, um, November fifth, or is it November fifth? Is when the HU friendly events can happen at, at the library, the input session. They're happening in the library, nine thirty tomorrow. And just, I've sent a lot of, I'm gonna send one last blast out on, uh, next Monday or Tuesday. It's, you know, a week late, I think.
We're gonna flyer, paper flyer as well.
Great, thank you.
And then we had a presentation to.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, we had a presentation to PTU presidents that was completed by the local folks as well.
And we did mention, uh, the point in time count. I stressed to people it was a very safe experience. Yeah, and we're still using the same method from the last time. Yeah.
Is that true? Is it, will it be the same app as?
I think so, I think it's gonna be the same methodology.
Okay.
The one.
The same app?
The app that we use still.
Yeah, I believe it's the same methodology and the same company, so it's.
Uh, Alameda Together Against Hate.
Uh, we've got an exciting, action-packed week here. And then we get Hate Week kicked off this Sunday, Monday. We were fortunate to be able to be in city council chambers while the mayor read the proclamation. Thank you for a wonderful proclamation that brought home all the points of our original resolution. And I was very happy to hear her read them, and, uh, I think it was to our advantage to at least hear those words out there. Spoke with the chief of police, police afterwards, and he actually said, yeah, I had this conversation with him at one point recently, and he said, this is what you guys are looking for, and you, you got something right there. So these are the types of actions that we really need to continue to do, and continue to push forward on this. United Against Hate Front, I think, hate's a powerful, powerful weapon that's used way too often in this day and age by people who are simply trying to divide us. And it's the easiest way to keep control is to divide people with hate. To quote a fictional character, where, you know, when you talk about where did hate come from, right? It usually starts, like the fictional character said, it starts with fear, and fear turns to anger, and then anger turns to hate, and then that hate turns to suffering. Say thanks, Yoda.
Oh, it's like, who said that?
That was a fictional character named Yoda, so he wasn't wrong. The, the sentiment is still right, and so when you see people afraid, which you hear a lot of people talk about these days, and the same people are angry, when you see them angry out there, you know that the hate is coming next. And so this is a problem that Alameda has a lot of, even though people don't know we want any of it. So I'm kind of glad that tomorrow we'll have our presentation of the, um, documentary Bias, which is a really good documentary about unconscious and implicit biases that everyone has, and we don't really acknowledge them because we don't know about them. So this is an opportunity for people to see what those biases look like. And the film is really well done, um, they touch on a lot of subjects that have to do with the type of work that people have to do even in our, in our work. And so I encourage everybody to come out and check it out, it's free, it's right here in council chambers. If you know somebody, tell them to come out, it's worth, worth our time. This is a national movement, and it's been going on for years now. And this is our third year in on the United Against Hate Week program, and I think if we can continue this movement over the next few years as part of the board, the better it will get, I think we'll get more and more of that. That's my outlook. Diane?
Yeah, I, I also.
Uh, so the film starts at six, um, the food will be served between five thirty and six o'clock?
Yeah, it's supposed to arrive at five o'clock.
Okay.
So, it's the time between five and six.
Food outside.
The, yeah, it's just the issue with the food is that we don't eat in chambers.
Right.
So if we, light people eating for them.
Right.
There may be some folks that decide to hang out and eat burritos and some cupcakes.
Yep. And we'll be having a panel discussion afterwards, uh, with several, um, people from the city of Alameda. Folks that have things to say and have been doing good works, and so it'll be a good time for discussion. We'll be hosting, I'll be hosting it with one of the youth advocates as well, so it'll be a nice group of people. And we'll ask some good questions, and they will have, open it up to the people who are in the audience, and hopefully, we'll get a lot of people in the audience, that, that's really the goal here, and we'll, we've got a lot of advertisement in, so I, I think we'll get a good group of people.
I've seen it at a bunch of different places, so, goes on that.
And if you have looked in various places, you'll see a poster somewhere in your neighborhood that says, Alameda stands, united against hate. That's a mighty powerful weapon right there.
And the banners are too.
Right, banners over on City Hall West, right?
Yeah, and here.
I didn't see it here, I'm gonna have to come up, you, okay, I'm gonna have to look at it after you hit the show. Okay, I definitely will come up and check it out. And Diane?
Yeah, I'd just like to commend the staff, um, you know, uh, for working with us on this effort, and, um, I mean, to be honest, I don't think we could have moved this far forward without, uh, you know, your support. So really, really want to thank you. You know, we, we've been working on this for, I don't know how many years, and it just gave me goosebumps to hear the mayor read, you know, the commendation, so, yeah, I, I'm really, really happy and pleased that at least she verbalized kind of what we've been trying to do and, and articulate, um, through the resolution, but we didn't get to the resolution. But this is, you know, uh, I, I think a victory for us in, in so many ways. And the fact that we're now visible with the banners is great, and then hosting the city hall, uh, convening is, it's the beginning of a conversation that we should continue to have, um, it's not gonna end tomorrow night. So, you know, these are issues that have been with us since the start of man.
Man, I think that we're just solve racism with the movie and cupcakes.
So it's a heavy lift.
Yeah, and then I, I think we, we should also thank our, um, fellow colleagues on this board who have, you know, just provided support, you know, just, you know, I mean, it's just been wonderful to, uh, you know, just, we know you have our backs on this issue, and, and that you understand, and it's not something that we have to debate, you know, as much. It, it's always good to have discord and, and discussion, uh, that's, that's who we are as human beings, and it's, that's the way we learn, so. Um, yeah, but we've just been very fortunate, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, it was your leadership and vision, Carol and Diane.
I just want to add something to, um, your, your Alameda Against Hate, just as information. You know, I've been, I've been trying to track down what happened, you know, with the, um, crowd code concerts and all of a sudden. And actually, that's not an old story, but I did actually get to talk to Jeff Campera. And during our conversation, he said, well, you know, the thing, he's still doing events, he, he was one of the guys who used to do those events. He said, the event I really would like to do here in Alameda is a Juneteenth event.
Oh, right.
So, um, I. I, I.
Is the guy that does the, Alameda Post from walking his dog, Jeff Campera?
I don't, he, uh, if he does, I don't know from that, but I know he runs like the beer brews and barbecues, and does those events and stuff. So he definitely knows how to do these events. I mean, he's, he would love to, I, I actually talked to him about, like, you know, with Carol, and so if you want to, you know, just have a conversation with him.
I like conversations, conversations go a long way.
Okay, I will, I will get in contact with him and have a conversation. So just, just an idea right now, you know?
Well, I was just gonna say, there is a Juneteenth event that happens annually in Alameda, but it's at, it's at South Shore, and it's pretty small. So you might just want to combine powers or do shops then as well.
Yeah, it's through the Food Business Association or something like that, I think.
I don't know, but it's like local vendors and food and things like that, um, small businesses. I'm not sure if it's through the chamber, but that's where, I'm not sure if that's what you mean, but that's where, that's where it's hosted, but it is every year.
Yeah, I was familiar with that one, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, but it's just an interesting idea. I might be able to fold into what you're, you know, you're doing and stuff, so.
I like it, I like it a lot.
Um, and then last but least, the domestic violence recruitment.
So I've had twice with the mayor on Zoom. First time with Sarah Henry and Catherine Schwartz, and second time, Lizzarella of Building Futures joined and discussed the video that the mayor has in mind.
I don't think they know about the video, Bernie, if you want to describe that.
Yeah, I heard about it last, yes.
Yeah, so the, the mayor wants to have a video on domestic violence awareness. And it was, her concern was that we're at about a year's anniversary of this horrible event. When, you know, a, a man, you know, killed his kids and wife. And then, um, October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. But so her vision was to push forward a video, or maybe two videos, it kind of depends. To have it done by the end of the month, and that's obviously not gonna happen. So she's now working with Sarah and the videographer, which is the last I heard of it. And we're now contemplating that there would be a video or videos maybe by the end of this year, early next year. So, um, I don't know if you've had more discussions with Sarah, but.
I think you know more than I do.
Greshen did, uh, your, your person's work, putting out a survey that was the information that came back, but somehow, I'm not sure it got, has it yet gotten integrated, and I'm gonna make sure that it does.
There's some really good stuff in there.
Babe, pardon?
There is some really good stuff in there.
There's really good stuff there, yeah. And then, um, we're planning our upcoming task force meeting, which, which is now a, also we're four times a year meeting of the, you know, the main, uh, providers of domestic violence services. The Alameda Police Department, the Fire Department, uh, the DA's office, and then all these wonderful people that are doing good work. So that's coming up, that's really my report.
I gotta say, when I heard, uh, the mayor mentioned the video, and she mentioned. I gotta say, when I heard the mayor mention the video and she mentioned he promoted that yesterday, I was like, wow, Bernie never told me anything about it. I didn't hear anything about it.
It's been really fast. I think we learned about it like two weeks ago.
I have to say, uh, yeah, man, definitely good job, good job.
And so it'll also help us doing, presenting this.
True. True.
Thank you. Good stuff, yeah. Um, well, this presents the I have five staff communications.
Okay, great. I am Cristia Manna Ayon and I am going to give, um, a report out on staff communications. So we, our team is growing. Um, as you all have heard, we are bringing our, we have brought our outreach team in-house. So we have hired, um, a program specialist. His name is Raoul Zetan Ola III. So he will be overseeing a team of engagement specialists. We have, uh, how many started? Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, I have their names. Jasmine Forsberg, Julianne Lillard. Um, and then we also have, she's not officially an outreach specialist, but our former intern Scarlett Wagner is working as like an assistant to the engagement team. Part-time.
Hmm? Hmm? Annie Flores.
Oh, and Annie Flores, yes, but she's, she's been on the team. Um, so we have a team. There are potentially maybe another engagement specialist added and that's, we're very excited and thrilled about it.
And that's, are they doing outreach Sundays a week?
Still coming. So they are doing outreach six days a week, Monday through Saturday, and the hours covered are seven AM to six PM.
Two days at the library and one of which is a Saturday.
Oh, and what housing supply that we have?
What, what?
Does the, I mean, I'm just basing
I didn't hear the question, sorry.
Um, what's housing supply? Like where do we, how do we, if we make, in Alameda, someone's unhoused, do we have a good supply?
Yes, um, I wanted to give an update about how to report and I can answer that question too. So the homeless hotline will retire at the end of twenty twenty-five, so we'll offer use that phone number. We've already initiated our See Click Fix, which is what residents are used to using for other reporting matters. So there, I believe it's called homeless engagement is our category. So if you go to See Click Fix Alameda and click on homeless engagement, you can put your report in there for whatever the case may be. If you see some, a tent or somebody who looks like they may be leaving off their car, you can put the information there. Um, you can give as much little information as possible. The more information, of course, the more helpful, so we can locate the person. Um, and pictures are a little tricky. I don't want to leave people's faces, taking pictures of them, making them uncomfortable. Uh, but sometimes photos of the area can be helpful, so we know where exactly. Or a pinpoint on the map, which See Click Fix, um, allows you to do, is very helpful. Um, for housing, well, also for See Click Fix, it's not just if you see somebody, but if you see debris that look like, looks like it may belong to somebody and it's not just trash, then that can come to us and we'll investigate. If you meet somebody who is at risk for becoming homeless, maybe they got a three-day quit, quitting notice or some other type of challenge, you can report that in See Click Fix also. Uh, we would need their information, um, to be able to contact them. Otherwise, you can just give them our information and they can decide to contact us themselves. And then for housing, from the street primarily, we're focused on giving people indoor, so we have our shelter programs. We have the winter warming shelter open till December. It will be five months this year, so it will be December first through April thirtieth. Then we have the day center, which it's almost full. Or, um, I heard today they're getting about fifteen people a night and there is seventeen available beds. Uh, but it's still available for some, for sir. We have emergency supportive housing that has twelve single adult beds. And then we have two family homes with one family per home. So those are the
And, and are those off-bell or?
The houses are built and so, but those are more intensive, so they have more intensive case management. It's more of a program so that people get, move into permanent housing through those programs. And then, um, the space becomes vacant for someone who's coming off the street. There is the possibility for people to become housed off the street. We do have, um, case engagement specialists working with those, um, some of those folks. And we partner with Building Futures for that too. And Building Futures right now does the county assessment, which is how a lot of people get housed. It's through the coordinated entry system and the county manages that. And that's how people typically get matched. We also work closely with the Housing Authority. Um, they have some new developments that came up and we have some pro, people move from programs into those units. So we do have, um, a nice flow, um, system here in Alameda where people can get housed if they are connected to services and are willing to go through the steps of going through the county system, getting their documentation, doing those processes.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm sure this is way past gone, but the See Click Fix to homelessness just
Feels like narking.
It just really lands like
Narking.
That people are homeless are the same thing as like a pothole, just really, I just, it feels
Like you're narking on your neighbor.
Not even narking, it's just that the dehumanizing of like what you do and like how you report a pothole is the same way we're reporting someone who's down, you know.
Also, like, is that, is it visible to other people? So like, if there is a pothole, everybody can see what other people have reported or those reports available to the public at that same way?
I would have to clarify, I'm not sure.
Cause it seems like maybe that is also concerning, that we're putting people's identities at risk and trust relationships seems, right? We have that like a point in time count, right? Or we do precounts and then people start to get antsy, right? Because people know where they are, so I'm wondering if we would have that same experience.
Yeah, I thought about that.
And just fix, I just, that language to me is really just lands a lot of good way. I'm, I mean, I'm sure this is not your choice to
It's my choice.
Oh, to use this sentence?
Yes, it's my choice. Uh, the hotline, it has not been, um, heavily utilized by the community, it was heavily utilized by staff.
Hmm.
Um, and it costs us money to use that, that See Click Fix is already in the structure. And I'm not sure about the, um, I didn't know that there was an option for people who may be seized, so I'll have to check on that.
Yeah.
But it's not a, I don't see it as a comparison of reporting. I mean, you're, you're either calling and reporting on the phone or, I mean, you're reporting it either way.
Yeah.
And it's our purpose and goal to then go support folks.
Yeah.
We're not like looking at it as a pothole to cover up or filling.
Yeah.
We're looking at it as a way for us to understand where people are, so then we can locate them and give them services instead of the community calling with police.
Yeah.
And criminalizing.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a really good perspective.
And I will say people would call homeless hotline with language of like, please fix and take care of us. It wasn't always well-meaning people trying to help folks. I think it'll be, it, it was similar.
I know.
Um, and the way that it worked was, we weren't getting direct phone calls, we were getting emails from the phone calls. So we were still getting them as like virtual requests. And then from those virtual requests, the, the outreach team was dispatched. Um, and also it's not the only way to reach us. We saw our phone number that you can call our main desk. Our administrative specialist is going to be trained on how to take those calls and to confirm which, uh, engagement specialists are on shift and how to, I guess, I keep saying dispatch, but, um, assign or forward that call. Um, and then there's the office hours today, so we get the library.
Uh, it's not happening, so, cause we're not, if folks, I, I definitely, if we go out into the community or doing like the PTA presentations or the home presentations, we wouldn't suggest that people go onto See Click Fix, right? Or like suggesting us still to call the offices or call two-one-one as like, if they're in need of services.
What's the question?
So if folks are in need of services, right? So if we're doing outreach in a community and trying to normalize that people may need assistance, before we had like a homeless hotline as like one of the numbers that they could call.
For them to ask for assistance for themselves.
Yeah.
I don't think the, I mean, I don't know, maybe that's what was shared before, but the homeless hotline in my experience was not used for that.
Right.
But they couldn't call our office number.
Okay.
So our office number has been connected with Bread, which does completely different work. We are splitting that, so that number is solely for HHS and Bread will have their separate number. So if people call us, then we'll know, you know, it's for services and typically it'll be for services. And, um, then we can connect them to one of our specialists and assign them to a specialist who can give them their cell phone number to direct them.
But then also assumes everyone has phones.
It would.
It assumes everyone has phones, right? A lot of this is phone contingent.
I, I just
Well, that was always the case, you know.
I just wanted to, I went to See Click Fix and if you go to parking enforcement, you can see a picture of the car that they wanted to have done. Now there's construction, they didn't have a picture of the construction, but
I mean, it's something we'll fly to IT. I feel like there has to be a way to prioritize it.
I, I was gonna say privacy, you, you know, PII being one is
Yeah.
I, I find concerning, like I said. If you haven't had somebody walk up in and take a picture of you while you're walking down the street, then you don't want to. But I have and I found it really offensive and slightly worrying. So I would, I would just say, if there's a way to just do your reporting without taking a picture or a lot, at least not including them on a public-facing website, that would be cool. That would be a lot safer too.
Yeah, I mean, but on the flip side, like someone who does this, like it's really hard to like
They can take the picture, but you don't have to put the picture on there. I'm not saying that
Yeah.
If it's gonna be PII, then it should stay within that boundary.
Yeah, yeah.
And not go out to the public, because then you're gonna have
And it's not gonna be our preference to have the photos go out to the public.
Okay.
We're gonna have to just speak about it internally and figure it out with IT.
Okay, I'm sure they'll figure it out. You guys, you guys are awesome. I have no question about that. Y'all are awesome. It's just, these are the things that
Now it's helpful to hear that people's thoughts and perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we also wouldn't want people interfering with the work, right? So it's like, there's multiple reasons why we wouldn't want that out, so we hear that.
I wouldn't want somebody going over and setting a fire on somebody either because they saw a picture. That kind of stupid stuff.
It just, I guess, especially with the recent Supreme Court hearing, it's just this like, I, for me, that visceral like See Click Fix of like
People were already reporting things on See Click Fix.
I know, I know, I know.
Without a camera.
I know, I'm sure, I'm sure it's happening. It just feels so wacky.
It's us, it's, yeah, I hear it, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why we're having these conversations here, so that we can say, we are not gonna do that here. I prefer we, can't change the world, we can't change the
I will, I will slowly change the IT, you know.
Okay.
Yeah. You can report directly to us, but I mean, I would rather people report on See Click Fix
Really?
Than to call APD or try to prosecute themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I agree. I don't, I don't see it that way.
It like makes sense, it just like
It's really not that, I mean, in Oakland, it's three-one-one, which was
Yeah, yeah.
Two-one-one, three-one-one.
Yeah.
It's just a the name of a platform.
Yeah.
And I can't change that.
No, I know. I just don't, human beings, like, for me, I've used it, like, there's trash on the, like, and like, I'm like, oh, there's a cat.
And people use it to record cameras and people still. And it wasn't helpful because it wasn't coming to us.
And if you wanna call and say, I found a dead raccoon, it's only a dead picture of the dead raccoon, but I think if you
Yeah.
Just, people should not be
Two-one-one, you can call still, but two-one-one was never routed to us. It was different from the hotline. So the hotline's Monday through Friday, nine to five. So if you call outside of those hours, it would just be straight two-one-one and we didn't get that information. So you would, you know, I don't know what they would tell you. Maybe you'd go to St. Vincent or something, I'm not sure. But it was not connected to our services and we never heard or got those reports.
Who's doing two-one-one for us again?
Yeah.
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 So they do it for the whole county, so they know.
And just like that whole dance of like, oh, this person has some referral stuff. I don't know, like what, can, you know, the coordinated entry and what they scored and how they're first, it's just such
Yeah, but all of the coordinated entry scores and prioritizing people
It's a mess.
It was, it's challenging, I forget around.
So I did have other staff, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
We went off on a tangent, sorry.
Andre also had some to add. Is, is everyone good to?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
That was my fault.
Um, great, so that was all wonder, that was all helpful information. Some of it has already been covered. Uh, so you all may be aware that through the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance in Alameda, our division manages below-market rate ownership and rental, um, compliance essentially. So anytime a new building goes up, there has to be a certain number of low-income affordable housing added. In the future, it may be, there may be a fee depending on what the new Inclusionary Housing Ordinance will, uh, include. Uh, but this, as an update for our program for ownership, uh, there have been three homes that have been closed on. So three new homeowners and two in the process.
Yeah.
Uh, you all heard about the various events, the film screening, the proclamation, the age-friendly listening session, lots going on. Um, Simone mentioned how the winter warming shelter, so that's actually gonna go to council November eighteenth, um, with the extra month proposed.
And case management services added.
Oh, actually.
The request for proposals for the day center operator was released, uh, for the, yes, for the, was released and it is due on October thirty-first by five PM. And separately, the Day Center Capital Work Invitation to Bid was released. So that's for the relocation and the renovations essentially of the new day center. The due date and bid opening for that will be November fifth at two PM. Uh, as you all heard, the Community Development Block Grant HUD award is on hold due to the federal government shutdown. And I was gonna pass it to Andre. You all, uh, asked a few questions. I'm not sure if there was anything left that you wanted to update related to the shutdown.
Yeah, um, just a few, a few points of emphasis. Uh, for those of you who are not aware, which I'm sure you guys all are aware, um, we're on day twenty-two of the government shutdown with no end in sight due to the political gridlock between the House and the Senate. Uh, this has affected most, if not all, of HUD programs from fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. But jurisdictions that have funding available from previous fiscal years can draw funding for carry-forward projects, which we have been able to do, um, which is a, a good thing. Uh, the systems and applications we use to report and draw HUD CDBG funds are still active, which allows us to continue our work in some capacity from the housing side. Uh, we are hopeful that Congress will eventually come to an agreement and pass the bill to fund those essential services and, and programs at the federal level. Um, and as mentioned earlier, the city does have a contingency plan to potentially fill the void if our providers are unable to sustain services. And wanted to end on a high note, uh, because I don't wanna be doom and gloom. Uh, there is a, an bill that has been introduced to Congress by, um, a senator, I believe, or a representative named, um, Sam Liccardo. He's a Democrat who is from Mountain View. Um, and this bill is called the Unlock Act. Um, so it provides more flexibility to use CDBG for new construction and affordable pro, housing projects. I'd also like to mention that our state is very strong as far as our economy. Um, we're the fifth or fourth largest economy in the entire world. Uh, so I see that with that, um, there's a lot of funding opportunities still for, you know, cities and jurisdictions throughout the state to apply for. Um, one being pro-housing incentive program fun, funding, which, um, they just announced that round four funding um, applications have been released and I'm sure, um, you guys have probably heard of permanent local housing allocation. And then we have Home Key Plus funding, which are all essential to affordable housing development and, um, addressing the, the unmet needs of, um, homelessness, veterans, um, and also seniors, um, who are our most vulnerable population. So just wanted to, uh, throw it out there, um, there is optimism and, and I think that, um, there is still a lot of good work to do, so, um, yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Andre. And he did bring to my attention that you need to vote on one more item for four B, so we need to go back to four B.
Okay.
Uh, do you wanna state what they need to approve, Andre?
Yes, uh, if you guys can approve, uh, continuing to fund our existing social service providers for a second consecutive year. Um, so that on a pro-rata basis, um, when HUD announces the twenty-twenty-six award allocations, that'll be appreciated.
You're up for a motion.
to approve that the CDBG dis, pro-rated distribution for a second year. Did I get everything there?
Yes, social service providers, yes.
The first of service providers. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second, all right. We will vote then. Bernie Wolf?
Yes.
Diane Yericharomi?
Yes.
Joel Bryant?
Yes.
Michelle Buckles?
Yes.
Samantha Green?
Yes.
Scott Means?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, that concludes, do you have another, that concludes staff at Alameda.
Now we're in board communication is not agenda, and as promised, Diane, you're first.
Oh, okay, thank you. I've been getting texts regarding the National Guard landing at Alameda. Whatever, in Alameda. And so I think folks are are trying to identify if there's any entities that are organizing folks. You know, that they, they would like to know so that we can put, put it out there.
I got a text message from a friend who would say that there was an organizing meeting going on actually at six o'clock earlier this evening.
Yes, there was a training.
Yeah.
Okay, but then, so at seven AM, I think people are being asked to go to the Coast Guard Station for a peaceful demonstration at seven AM in the morning. And that there's gonna be a rally in San Francisco at six PM, I guess, is what I've heard. Oh, five PM, sorry, five PM rally at San Francisco and Barcadero Plaza tomorrow. So I just wanted to share that.
We're supposed to be coming over to watch a movie.
Diane, do you have any other announcements you'd like to share?
Food starts at five.
Yes, I have submitted my resignation to Scott. And, yeah, so I think I'm a new grandmother. And my son and daughter-in-law, you know, their, their maternity, paternity leave is gonna be ending. So I will need to step in as a caregiver. And I'm hoping I could lift that baby, because she's getting bigger and bigger by the day.
Gets stronger as they get bigger.
Oh, God. So at any rate, I am moving on to a new adventure, and I just, as of January, so December thirty-first, I guess, would be the end of my, my, my term. So I just wanna again, thank, thanks, everybody for being such wonderful co-conspirators in making Alameda better. I hope, you know, we were able to do a little something, so. Yeah, and appreciate you're carrying the work forward.
You will be missed.
You will.
I will miss you all, and I'm sure, hopefully, we'll see each other on the street and wherever we go.
Is the baby local?
She's in Oakland.
I wonder.
Yeah, so not too far.
So you will be at the December meeting now, yeah?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I will. That'll, that'll be the, the end.
Well, we, you sent an email about, we have.
The mayor nominated a new board member at last night's city council meeting, and it will be voted on in November.
Oh, great. Can we sneak another person in, so it won't take a full year?
Hopefully, yeah.
They have a resume, right?
Yeah, I'm worried you all the rest of the day.
I looked at the resume.
But it's not a, it's unfortunate, it's not a, an item we can discuss, because it's not the agenda item, so. But, but, you know, you can look at it, and of course, it's gonna be approved in November. If you have any comments about this person, I encourage you to show up to the council meeting on November fourth.
Uh, I had one, two minutes.
Yes, and there will be another person that she needs to interview for the other, but a lot of times in these, I don't know how it works in Alameda, but I know they like looking at people unless someone actually left to talk to they left. So she might even wanna look at other people until after December, so, or after January, the second position.
Thank you.
Just be realistic about expectations.
Gotcha.
I got one.
Okay.
There will be reparation listening sessions for Alameda County Reparations Commission Listening Session going on in East Oakland Youth Development Center, Saturday, the twenty-fifth, from twelve to two. There's a flyer I'm happy to send around to everybody, but I think, again, it's important that people have these kind of listening sessions to understand what the nature of reparations are and how they actually work and the way the processes are done. And the ones that they had here in Alameda were very enlightening. There are several ecumenical programs out there that are working for reparations. And it was very interesting to see the things that they were doing and how they were doing it, so I simply say, come listen, see what people have to say, and hopefully you'll be as enlightened as I was, so, all right, that was mine.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Well, then, we can adjourn the meeting at, I'll say it's eight thirty-eight PM. Well, it's like ten seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Hi, guys.